You get to sit at the kids' table.
Was that yours?
The kids' table?
Does it look like me? Well, I don't know. Not that one.
Is that yours?
My yours.
I was wondering why you had a pink phone.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm like, you used to not have it, it was white.
What's that?
Youse- wasn't it white?
It was black, but it's so bad. Rachel got a new phone, so I took her old case. And by the way, it's not pink, it's salmon.
Oh, excuse me. And my car is salmon.
Salmon are pink.
Salmon.
Good evening. It is Monday, November 22nd, and I welcome you to the Maple Plain City Council Meeting. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am looking for a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill.
Second.
Seconded by DeLuca. Any further discussion? All in favor of adopting the agenda as is, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Well, it is an exciting evening tonight. We have lots of great presentations and many guests, so we welcome you all here. And the first one tonight is our Good Neighbor of the Year Award. And it is my honor to share this with you. So Joanne Ree was thrilled to nominate Judy and Chuck Sutherland for this award and share their many achievements. Judy and Chuck Sutherland own Sutherland's Nursery and Tree Service, which celebrated 60 years in business in 2020. Chuck has lived in Maple Plain all of his life, and Judy has lived here since she married Chuck 57 years ago. The Sutherland's are well-known in their neighborhood and the community of Maple Plain. Judy has been a volunteer to family, friends, and neighbors in many ways, such as preparing meals, grocery shopping, taking to appointments, and even cleaning their homes. Judy and Chuck have hosted the annual night-to-night event numerous times at their home. In years past, Judy volunteered as coordinator of the parade for Maple Plain Days and organized the citywide sidewalk sale. Chuck and Judy have been instrumental in the Maple Plain Historical Museum. Judy has been on the committee since it was formed in 2014, serving as treasurer. Judy organizes historical information that is received from families and is always willing to help families search for information. She was involved with the Trails to the Libraries program. Judy is also the editor of the Maple Plain Museum History Handout. Judy has led the museum committee in various fundraising activities, creation of a pin that the museum committee sold, selling of bricks with family names engraved on them, and her newest idea is a cookbook to sell with recipes from supporters of the community and membership families. Judy has participated in many other community activities, which the museum committee has always been involved in: View Santa, Pie and Ice Cream Social, Movies in the Park, Selling Ice Cream at Christ Lutheran Musical Concerts. Chuck has maintained the flowers and shrubs and mulches around the museum and makes repairs. He even built a scale replica of the museum. Chuck and Judy store many items at their home that are used for museum events and haul them back and forth as needed. Judy and Chuck have decorated the museum for seven years for the holidays. Judy is often found attending city workshops and council meetings, showing her interest in the city of Maple Plain and keeping updated and informed of the current happenings in the city and council decisions. Chuck and Judy Sutherland met all of the criteria of the description of the Good Neighbor Award: endless volunteering, contributions, and dedication as a team, individually and as a business of Maple Plain. On behalf of the entire council, we thank the Sutherland's for their many years of service to the community of Maple Plain and are proud to award them the 2021 Good Neighbor of the Year Award. Chuck and Judy, will you please come forward? You might not recognize Chuck. He got a haircut. Cleaned up. This is a festive occasion.
Thank you so much. Thanks for everything on behalf of the council and the league. And I will turn the mic over to you guys for a few minutes if you'd like to. Sorry.
Well, I can't thank everybody for coming, all of our friends, neighbors. It's quite an honor. We just do what we do, and I guess we don't even think about it. So anyway, thank you very much for this. It is quite an honor. Thank you.
Did you want to say anything?
And thank you both. All right. Our next presentation this evening, we welcome to the podium Commissioner Marge Beard. Marge Beard, Commissioner, is our Three Rivers Park District Representative, and I'm going to give her the floor for a few minutes to share with us.
Awesome. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Is this working? Yes?
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So my name is Marge Beard, and I am your Three Rivers Park District Commissioner for District One. District One represents most of western Hennepin County, including all of Maple Plain. I'm a longtime resident of Plymouth, where I have had the great honor to serve on my Plymouth City Council. And I really want to extend my personal thanks for the work that you do. I know what it's like to get those calls and emails, and most of all, I really understand what a grassroots job this is, where you really have to look your neighbors in the eyes and make decisions that impact their work as well as their home and residence. So for that, I thank you, because it's really very, very important work.
Thank you.
There we go. Great. So Three Rivers Park District, our mission is promote environmental stewardship through recreation, education, and the highlight is in a natural resources-based park system. So what makes us different than other parks? For example, we usually partner with some of our city parks for different things. So city parks, you'll see maybe ball fields and soccer fields, those type of things you won't see in our natural resource-based system. So who is Three Rivers Park District? People have heard of us as different things over the years. So we're actually what's called a special park district. We were established by the state legislature, so we're kind of a standalone government entity. We have a relationship with the county, but we're really not part of the county. We're run by a Board of Commissioners. There are seven commissioners. Five are elected, and two are appointed. I serve as one of the elected commissioners. Three Rivers includes most of, all of western Hennepin County, all of, sorry, all of suburban Hennepin County. We have a partnership with Scott County, where we actually run some of the parks on their behalf. And we do partner with Hennepin County and some other agencies in some of our golf-related recreation. We have over 25 parks, many acres of land, 170 miles of regional trails. The regional trails are the trails that are outside of our parks. And then we have over 300 miles of trails within our parks, some paved, some turf, some dirt, a variety for any kind of recreation you might be looking to do. And most importantly, we have nearly 14 million visitors per year just in our Three Rivers Parks, and really, that's two times the state population. So we're a well-used park district. So when you think of Three Rivers, you really think of us, most people think of us for recreation, whether it's camping, or Lake Independence boating, or golf, canoeing, skiing. But today, what I really want to talk to you about is our natural resources. So we're a natural resources-based park. So one of the things that makes us different is we actually use science. So Three Rivers was instrumental in the 1960s on the introduction of the trumpeter swans to Minnesota. So every time you see a trumpeter swan, just know that your park district had a little bit of a role in that. In the 80s, we worked on introducing the osprey bird to our area. And more recently, we're working on turtle studies over at French Park in Plymouth, where we protect their nests and we kind of track how they swim through Medicine Lake. We're big advocates for clean water, so we have over 200 aquatic invasive species inspectors. How to kind of get, that's a long sentence. That's really only second to the DNR in the state. So for those who've been over to Baker, anytime you put your boat in and out, I'm sure, or watercraft, you've been through that process. As far as trees, kind of the other angle of natural resources, we have our own nursery. So in Three Rivers, we actually grow our own trees from seed. All the seed needs to be found within 25 miles of Hennepin County. So every tree within Three Rivers is a native tree. We don't have ornamental trees, or apple trees, or things like that, so. So when I came in here, people asked me, "How are the parks doing? How are the parks doing?" Well, they're booming. So they always were doing well, but as we know, in 2020, people really sought ways for recreation. And we saw, not only are our numbers increased, but we saw the time of day, everything was a little bit different. People were in the parks usually when it's quiet. We've seen that trend continue, and we're hoping it continues into the future as well. Maple Plain, so you have our oldest park, Baker Park Reserve is the original park in our Three Rivers system. And one of the new things that happened there, in June, we opened up our new play area. Mayor Mas Cuskey and Councilmember Cahill joined me there, and we had a great time, taking pictures and opening up. If you haven't been over there, it's quite a destination. People come from all over to go see it. And then moving forward, so Three Rivers is always looking for opportunities to partner with the cities. We have naturalists, as well as arborists on staff and water people. And if your city has challenges like that, we're always willing to sit down and, you know, talk to you about it. We see what's going on in the county, countywide, so sometimes we could actually, you know, help share some information, kind of, you know, work toward a common goal. So then, a couple of things I brought with me were some fun facts about Maple Plain residents and where they go and what they do. So the first is, it's really no surprise, your most visited park would be Baker Park Reserve. So that one's pretty easy. This one surprised me, though. In passes purchased, your number-one pass purchased for Maple Plain residents is the Dog Off Leash Area. So quickly, right behind it, not by much, and number two is the Boat Trailer Annual Parking Pass, and that was not a surprise. I thought that would be a little higher. And number three was the Swim Pond Annual Pass. And if you haven't visited, we have two swim ponds, one in Elm Creek, up in the Maple Grove area, and one in Lake Minnetonka Regional Park. So a swim pond is a sand-based, large pond, multiple football fields, you can think of it. And the key is, we bring water in from, like, Lake Minnetonka Regional Park. We bring water in from the lake, and we chlorinate it and, you know, treat it. So you don't get any swimmer's itch or anything like that. So that kind of concludes my sharing with you of kind of the park updates in Maple Plain, but I'd be happy to take any questions people have.
Any questions for the Commissioner?
Sure. As part of the partnerships with communities, do you do anything like with the nursery as far as grants or whatnot for trees for our parks or anything like that? Is that anything that Three Rivers does?
We don't. And a lot of that has to do with not competing with private nurseries. If it's within our lands or borderlands or our trails, maybe would be the answer, but typically, we would not. That would probably be an area we would not typically work together on.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions for the Commissioner? Well, thank you for your work and for representing our area and partnership. We appreciate it.
My pleasure. Thanks for having me tonight.
Thanks for being here. Our next item of business this evening is another presentation, this one by Alec Scherson, and he's going to share with us about his Eagle Scout project that he did here in one of our very own parks.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm glad to be back, giving a recap on my project. Now, if you remember, back in August, I proposed a Gaga Bowl pit in Rainbow Park. And that project was completed on September 4th. And as you can see in these pictures, I had five scouts helping me throughout that day. And the assembly on site only took about eight hours. As hectic as that preparation up to that project was, the construction went pretty smoothly on site. With the, or I'm sorry, everything finished that day except for the signs and the footholes that help kids climb into the pit that I had to go back and finish later. The total cost for the project came to $749, about $115 less than my initial projection in August. And the community has been loving it. We've had, we even had kids coming up and wanting to play while we were building it in September. And I took a look at it last week, and it looks like it's been getting a lot of use out there. So thank you all very much for being accommodating with the quick permission and the funding. I couldn't have done it without you. And I think the final product looks great, and will stand the test of time pretty well.
Thank you for that update and for your work. Any questions for Alec?
How many more Eagle Scouts can you line up for us?
Probably get a few.
Send them my way.
What was the biggest challenge you had with the project?
With the construction of the project, there were a few inconsistencies with the length of each board, and our initial plan of measuring from each edge in didn't work then, because for those brackets, you need really, really precise measurements. So on the fly-in construction day, we kind of had to change around the way that we measured things. But after we got that figured out, it was smooth sailing.
Awesome. Great. All right. Well, thank you. Oh.
Sorry. Remind me, are those green treated cedar, or what are those boards?
They are cedar-toned pine, treated. Yeah.
Treated. Okay. So we'll just keep an eye on them?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much for that legacy and for the partnership between Troop 206 and the city of Maple Plain.
Of course. Thank you.
We appreciate it. All right. Congrat- I'm assuming you're wearing your Eagle衔. Congratulations on your rank. Our next presentation this evening.
I just wanted to say, as a fellow Eagle Scout myself and father of three 206 Eagle Scouts, congratulations. And this is just the stepping stone to getting involved with other community service organizations like Rotary. Congratulations.
Thank you. And on that note, tonight, we are honored to have the Orna Rotary here. The city of Maple Plain is a partner with Orna Rotary. At this time, Councilmember Fay and myself are on the Rotary as well, and I'm going to turn it over to Rotarian Kevin Krolcheck to lead us through this part.
Okay. Lyle, if you'd come up, and Dave also. So what a treat to be here tonight and gloat a little bit about the neat things that can happen between a neat community and a neat service organization. So our club was started in the early 2000s, and from the beginning, in particular, our fellow member here, Dave Shaughnessy, has always had a real passion for the veterans. He has gotten a number of things happening with veterans' events. He pushed for the school to get back to having a Veterans Day event, and just done a lot of neat things. And so we're just particularly proud of, with the party in the park and with the work that we did together on that and having that in the Veterans Memorial Park out there. And then this year, we were glad to be able to have the party again. And we went out into the community and, of course, asked community members to come to it, asked local businesses to support it, raised, and we said we wanted to put these dollars towards veterans' causes. And so the community was just super supportive. We raised about $10,000. And so I had the privilege of starting with our very own American Legion here, out of Maple Plain, the Paul Stinson American Legion. And I knew a couple of these guys personally, and I went to them and said, you know, "Hey, what's been on your list that you haven't been able to buy for the Legion post?" And, you know, they came back with about, might have been about $350 worth of stuff or something like that. And I said, "Hey, there's got to be more things that you guys need than this." And, you know, they use their own dues to cover, you know, jackets, ties, all these different types of things. So we came back with a list of nearly $1,800 worth of stuff for them and the awesome work that they're doing throughout our community: jackets, hats, some shirts, ties. They had some flag poles that had been damaged a couple of years ago, and there's an example of one in the corner. I think we got six of them, or eight of them, I can't remember exactly, but they can extend out. And even flags. And I was like, "Why do you guys, you know, why are flags on the list?" Well, several of the cemeteries were the ones that replaced the flags. I was thinking, like, wow, you're spending, taking that out of your own pocket to do that. And so one of the other things that I asked to put on the list or talk to them about was, I'd been to a couple of veterans' funerals, where I know they always make the efforts, both with our American Legion and with others, to come up with a real bugler or trumpet player to play taps. But sometimes, it's just not practical. They can't get someone out of, sometimes they ask students, but sometimes it's just not practical. And then I've seen someone holding the microphone up to some type of boombox. And so anyway, there's this electronic bugle. It's a bugle that they put this instrument into the front of the horn, and it has different volume levels, and they had the opportunity, I thought it was really neat, for Veterans Day, with last year not being able to go into several of the homes of older veterans, nursing homes. This year, they got to go there, and they got to bring their new trumpet, the bugle, and play taps. And they just said how, even, I think they were wondering how much they would like this, and I've heard them all talking about how great they thought it was. So just wanted to tell you about how neat it is with everything that's been happening with Party in the Park, and we hope to keep it going. And we want to thank you guys for all that you do in our community. And then I thought it was so interesting, the kids weren't able to have you there this year, and here's what they came up with. Right, the high school?
Yeah.
So you were missed, and so come on up. We want to present this to you guys.
Why don't we do it right here, Kevin?
Okay.
I'll do a picture.
So like I said, it's just really great to come out and thank these guys for all that they do in our community, and I know it's a lot more than just what they do with the American Legion, but we're just really proud of being able to support them. And again, thank you to the city for all of your help in supporting Party in the Park and your neighbors.
Do you make sure to introduce yourself for those that don't know you?
My name is Jim, Mayor, commander of the Maple Plain American Legion Post. I am overwhelmed at the generosity of the Rotary. They just came to us and said, "How can we help? What a generous organization." And you might ask, "What did they give us?" They gave us six more white shirts like this, six more heavy jackets like this, six more light jackets like Gary's wearing, six telescoping flag poles like in the corner, US flags, state flags, POW flags, a beautiful bugle that plays itself, white hats, black hats, ties. Like Kevin said, every time I went to where the list, he said, "That list ain't long enough." Make it longer. So we did. So thank you, Rotary. And speaking for our post, I want to thank you, Rotary. And also, I want to thank all the members, the businesses, and individuals that are members of the Rotary. Thank you very much. I'm overwhelmed. And now, our past commander, Gary, would like to say a couple of words.
Just a few. Yes, I served as post commander for about 12 years, adjutant for about 10 years. So I've been around, I know what's going on in the community, and I know what you guys have done for us. It's awesome. Let me read it this way. "Thank you so much. A, the Veterans Memorial Park, with the city of Maple Plain and others, it happened. And now you've come up with Post 514 material needs to refresh our post appearance. Again, thank you. Going back just to 2015, I know of meetings in 2015 with the city about Northside Park, a museum, a veterans' memorial. City of Long Lake gracefully shared with us what it took in 2005 in Long Lake to put the memorial up. It gave us a footprint on what we wanted to do. And in 2020, it became real because of the Rotary and city of Maple Plain. Thank you, thank you, thank you. It's wonderful. Now, in 2021, as I understand, Orna Rotary asked what materials, things, Post 514 needed to refresh our looks, requesting, redemanding, a better list each time we supplied one. The Orna Rotary are serving Post 514 with the tools to better serve. I close with the only way I can say, because our veterans were there, we are here. Thanks from Post 514."
Thank you all. And, oh, did you have more?
While I have your attention, let me add one more thing. Chuck Sutherland, who was just here, he's been a member of our post for over 50 continuous years.
Wow. That is awesome. "Thank you" just doesn't seem like enough, but thank you. And I truly believe, together, we are better. And if we continue to model this to our community and the generations, that the world will be a better place for everyone, and we will be united again. So thank you for your service and commitment. Next item of business this evening is Visitors to Be Heard. Were you given any? Okay. Hearing none, we will move on to our next item of business, which is Consent Agenda. And tonight's consent agenda includes meeting minutes from the October 4th City Council Special Meeting, minutes of the October 18th City Council Special Workshop, minutes of the October 25th City Council Workshop, minutes of the October 25th City Council Regular Meeting, minutes with the change made on page to a motion. There was an incorrect number on New Business Letter A, that has been updated. And then also Planning Commission Appointment and 2022 Liquor Licenses. Did I get that correct?
Yes. And do you mind if I just, really quick, the Planning Commission Appointment, I just want to point out, so we had Jared apply, and we interviewed him, and so I did meet with him. But in kind of reviewing, you know, where do people land, there's kind of this housekeeping, appointing, essentially reappointing everyone, because we didn't really have any records. So that's kind of why the rest of them are appointed, even though they are currently serving.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay. With that, then, I'm looking for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, letters A, B, and C, with the change made to the minutes of the October 25th meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Fay. Seconded by DeLuca. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. Motion carries five to zero. Next item of business is Accounts Payable, and I'm going to turn that over to Steph.
Thank you, Mayor. As I've done in the past, I kind of outlined a couple of items from each batch. So we have the city check batch, or some software that's due for the fees. We got the new emergency radios for Public Works in City Hall, and so there's a little bit of an overlap between the old lease and the new one. And then the annual unsolved payment is due as well. Fire Partnership had a bit, they had some training, kind of high-training expenses due to their fire due to their Fire Chiefs Association Conference up in Duluth last month, so. And then, I revised the process a little bit. We would normally do the pay, sorry, pay requests as a separate item, and it was just getting a little less than streamlined with our AP process of those, so I'm just going to start adding those in as an additional kind of batch, call them out a little bit, like we would normally, but also kind of combine them with our normal AP process, so those are listed there. And so that's the final pay request for Veterans Memorial Park, pay request number four for the reconstruction project, and then, you guys had approved the purchase of the generator, but we're just adding that check into that batch as well. And that is just the down payment, so. I'm happy to address any questions as best I can.
A comment, question. Page 36 of the city's accounts payable, Maple Plain Fire, Maple Plain Independence Fire, is that supposed to be 14,000 versus 1,400?
I'm sorry, page 46.
No, page 36. Third from the bottom. I believe it's a typo, and I don't know if the check will be cut for 1,400, or will it be cut for 14,000?
I will have to check on that.
Thank you. And then, page 34, which is carefree services for the street sweeping. Ironically, I rarely get contacted, but I did get contacted from two people about two things. Is it possible to do the street sweeping a little later in the season than when it was done? And number two, I'm quite confident we paid less than $2,000 for the street sweeping last year. And, so just confirm that that too is not a typo?
Less than 2,000 for the?
For the street sweeping.
For the totals?
Yeah, I think if I remember correctly, we, the street sweeping and then, and then Bendixson, I think, took the debris, so this is street sweeping and disposal. I just want to confirm that it's consistent with where we were last year. Just two things to look into.
Yeah, and we definitely, I think, missed the mark on that street sweeping timing. So we were even contemplating a second round and looking at the costs for just kind of hitting some of the heavier areas, because there are, there were a lot of leaves that came down late in the year, and we would prefer not to have those in our storm sewers, so.
And then if that's all, if that's, if anyone else has anything on city, I would like to ask a question on fire.
All right.
And Commissioner Cahill, Councilmember Cahill, mentioned this some time ago, but do we still have a Zoom, does the city still have a Zoom account?
We do. I have decreased our membership, or whatever it's called, our, to, because we're not doing the webinars, so there's a webinar version and then a regular meeting version, so I decreased it. Are you inquiring about the fire?
Yeah.
Yeah, I?
There's Zoom charges on there, and being on the commission, as well as the Relief Association, we're not utilizing Zoom anymore, so, and I do not believe they are.
Yeah, I asked the same question. So I think the staff was working, they, I overheard a conversation, I'm not sure if they were looking for a, to decrease it or to try and cancel it early, but we, I did start looking into that, yeah.
And then, if no one else has anything on there, I have something on the third batch.
Anyone else have questions for the fire batch?
No.
Okay. Capital Project batch comes from?
Yeah, okay, the first one, which would be the street improvement. Normally, we, this is for Dave, normally we have a document or a narrative that would, that would state that you've confirmed quantities and requests that we make the payment. We don't have either.
You do actually, they're behind that, they're the next pages.
That was for the Veterans Memorial, I'm talking about the 2021 street improvement.
Yep, page 44 is the Keighley.
You're asking for kind of a cover letter to go with that, though?
A cover letter or a signature.
Oh, where'd your signature go?
Oh, I don't know, it was on.
It was on there.
That you, you?
Yes.
You've reviewed the quantities and recommend payment?
We can, I'll make sure we provide a cover letter with those in the future.
So you are recommending payment?
Yes.
Because you reviewed quantities?
Yes.
Okay. Quick question in that one. Typically, as far as like gravel goes, how many tons does a dump truck hold of class five?
14, something like that.
So, when, in the parking lot construction, we brought in over 100 trucks of class five to bring up the elevation of the parking lot?
It was a lot. I guess I'd have to do the math on it, but yes, we brought in a lot of gravel into the, into the parking lot. The center was raised, I think, a couple of feet.
Oh, really? Okay. There's 1,800 tons of class five?
Right.
Went into that parking lot? And then, on the final pay for JL Tice for the Veterans Memorial Park Improvement, if I do my arithmetic correctly, this will be the final payout, and we were, we will actually be under the proposed $522,000, is that correct?
Correct.
Wow, that's fantastic.
Yeah, if you recall, we had some approved changes to the project?
Right.
That increased the approved amount of the project to $522,000, but with other savings, it actually came in less than that approved amount.
That's fantastic. I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Any other questions from anyone? So with that, I am looking for a motion to approve the city check batch.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill.
I'll second.
Second by DeLong. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the city's check back, batch? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. I'm looking for a motion to approve the Fire Partnership check batch.
So moved.
Moved by DeLong.
Second.
Second by Fay. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the Fire Partnership check batch? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next motion is to approve the Capital Project check batch.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill.
Second.
Second by DeLuca. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the Capital Project check batch? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Our next item of business this evening is staff reports. All of those have been submitted in writing. We have received reports from our city planner, West Hennepin Public Safety, our city engineer, People Service Public Works, our fire, and our administration and finance. Looking for a motion to receive all of the staff reports this evening.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Fay.
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember DeLong. Any questions for staff or comments? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of receiving the staff reports? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. The reports are received. Our next item of business this evening is the public hearing, and I'm going to turn that over to staff.
Thank you, Mayor. You will probably recall this from prior years. Your typical special assessment certification for delinquent utility charges is for our water and sewer bills attached, and actually, I left a revised list on your, at your place. We did have two payments since the pack went out last week, so that has decreased somewhat. And then, different from prior years, we did add miscellaneous billing charges, certification on miscellaneous billing, and this is for a CUP permit, that the permit allows for the violations, unpaid violations, to be certified to their taxes. And so, we have added that, and these are the charges through October is when they receive notice on this. So that's for 50, 60, Highway 12 collision corner. Scott is here to answer any questions, obviously, so I will defer to him to any legal issues, and other than that, just look for a motion for that resolution.
What's the plan with that property?
I think it's going to end up being similar to other code enforcement issues, where we are kind of choose when we're, when we're done, and we take them to court. So we've, we have this tool, a, there's a chance, of course, that they would challenge that in court. In theory, you know, if they, if it, if they don't, and then it stays on their taxes, we could eventually go into some sort of a forfeiture process, but whatever we do, it's going to be long and expensive.
So what is, what has the reply been? Nothing?
Nothing. We, actually, we got the first violation payment back in April of $500, and then nothing after that, so, no response.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Clarissa, on the utility delinquency certifications, did we determine if that's $150 in addition to what they owe? 150 plus 10% of what they owe? And are these figures reflective of what the code has?
You know, I apologize, I had Sharon put this together, and I assumed that what she was doing was accurate, so I would have to verify with her that those are the, how those numbers were determined.
So do we need to note something in the motion in case they're not, or that's not a concern?
Well, the notifications were sent out with these amounts, so I'm not sure, I think we should probably just certify these amounts. Because we would have sent notifications on the delinquencies stating that this is the amount, you can challenge this amount in this public hearing, et cetera, et cetera. So I think it's one of a, one of those, let's just go with these numbers and make sure that we're doing it correctly in the future. And not to say that this is not correct. Again, I would have just needed to verify that prior with Sharon.
Adam, Mayor?
Yep.
I will, I will state that with regard to any special assessment, if there's a challenge to it, it looks at the specific property itself, not the assessment as a whole, and so if there is a, is a challenge, and there's found to be some form of deficiency, there, it can always be reassessed. So it's not, but I would suggest, since that was the amount that went out on the assessment rule with regard to the notice, that we follow what the notice says.
Thank you. Attorney Lance. And if we were talking about larger numbers, I might say, let's recess and I'll call Sharon, but.
These are not the assessment rules, these are the delinquent taxes.
Correct.
Are we talking the same thing, Scott?
These are the, this is not the special assessment, these are the delinquent utility.
Right, that's what I'm talking about. Right, I'm not saying, but utility bills.
You're using assessment.
Well, it's still a special assessment we're putting on, I'm sorry. Because we are still specialty assessing, we're still following under the same chapter in the Minnesota statutes, and that's why I use that terminology.
Thank you for clarification. Any other questions or clarification from staff?
Do we need a motion to open the vote?
Yep.
I would move to open the vote.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Cahill to open the hearing.
Second.
Second by DeLuca for the public hearing. All in favor of opening the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone to speak for the utility deli, delinquent certification? Anyone to speak? Anyone to speak?
I'm not sure exactly what you guys, I got lost in that last part, to be perfectly honest. We did, because you tabled the issue last month about the special assessments for the street project. Is that what you're currently discussing?
No, it's not. We are currently discussing a resolution certifying delinquent utility charges, so these are residents and businesses that have not paid their bills.
Okay.
So it will be assessed to their taxes, so thank you for clarifying.
Sorry, I got lost.
Nope, it's okay. All right, so we asked three times, there is no one to speak for the utility delinquent certification.
I move to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Motion to close by Councilmember Cahill, second by Councilmember DeLuca, all in, any further discussion? All in favor of closing the public hearing regarding utility delinquency certification? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
Can I clarify something? There's actually two components to this certification. It's delinquent utility bills as well as unpaid fees.
Correct.
Nothing to do with utility.
Miscellaneous billing.
Okay.
Yes, the motion to approve or as, which we'll go on now. So now, I am looking for a motion to approve a resolution certifying delinquent utility charges and miscellaneous billing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by DeLuca, second by Fay. Any further discussion? Questions? All in favor of approving the resolution certifying delinquent utility charges and miscellaneous bill, billing? Signify by saying aye, please.
Aye. Aye.
Yes, it would be a roll call vote, because it's a resolution, so I will turn it over to staff.
Thank you. Councilmember Fay.
Aye.
DeLuca?
Aye.
Moskowski?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
And DeLong?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it, five to zero. Thank you. Our next item of business this evening is old business, and it is the 2021 Reconstruction Special Assessments, and I'm going to turn that over to staff.
I'm going to turn this over to, oh, your voice.
Yeah, so, I'm not, I'm not sick, I just was a little hard in my voice, I guess, this weekend.
Packers.
Yeah, that was, that was fun for me, I don't know what other. So, yeah, just to recap where we're at, so, in your pack, it kind of lays out the steps that we've gone through with this project dating back to 2020. And at our last meeting in October, we were to the point where we had the assessment hearing for the project, which gave property owners the opportunity to address the council and make comments on their proposed assessment. The proposed assessment that was prepared by Bolton and Mink was based on the city's assessment policy, past practice, and was based on the actual project cost for both construction and soft costs such as engineering. So that was the way that was put together, presented to the city. Obviously, you also have other information that you requested and that you've received, which is the CBRE report, that gives you additional information based on their view of the project, and their, their information that they provided you on their. on their thoughts on the special benefit for the project and dollar values associated with that. Again, from our standpoint, kind of based on the discussions we've had in the past, I think all of the information has been presented both to the public and to the council. Clarissa had previously provided you some information just to kind of show you how the assessments are affected based on kind of different cost apportionments that you can kind of look at, see how that shakes out based on, if you were to deviate from your assessment policy, how that would affect the project cost or the apportionment. So, tonight, again, the public hearing has now been closed. So, we're really back to have discussion on the proposed assessment role and to take action. And the hope would be that you would approve an assessment role tonight so that that can be certified to the county and be put on the tax rolls. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or provide more information if you desire.
Thank you, Dave.
So, to clarify, there is no information that is new tonight from last month's?
No. From a staff perspective, the assessment role that's been previously proposed is still what we're presenting for your consideration tonight. Again, with the kind of caveat that, obviously, you have things to consider, such as the input you had at the last meeting and other, any other information that you've received or you believe is, is appropriate to consider when determining those assessments. From our perspective, you know, following the process that we've followed since last year, we've been consistent with the way this has been presented as far as how those costs would be apportioned. Again, getting now to the final step where it's just based on actual costs instead of estimated cost, which every step along the way, those costs have come, they're less than what were previously estimated, both from a construction standpoint and a soft cost standpoint.
I would add, Mayor, that, that the new information would, would be the people that sent in those challenge letters on time. So, that would be the eight property owners listed in the executive summary.
Well, I don't feel the need to repeat my entire spiel. So, I guess I'll just renew my motion for discussion, and we can talk about it. So, I would move that we adopt an assessment at 26%, which would be a per-unit assessment of $12,752.89, which is close to the average of the CBRE report, which was presented in the engineer's report last at the public hearing. I believe it's the fairest amount, because it's closest to the special benefit. We have used appraisers' special benefits on the past two of three projects to lower assessments, and I believe it's the right thing to do.
So, there is a motion on the table by Councilmember Cahill for the 26%.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Councilmember Delong. Is there any discussion or questions, comments?
I am probably more responsible than anyone for putting a, putting the brakes on last month's meeting. And I promised then that I would take that new information and do some investigation. And my position hasn't changed. I can't support a 26% assessment value. I looked at a variety of materials, clear back to 2014, assessments of Main and Rainbow, as well as the Bud, and as well as this most recent project, Howard and Independence. And as I mentioned, when we established the meeting, I have considerable problems with the CBRE document. I'm probably the, was the biggest cheerleader for CBRE to come in and do the assessment of this newest 2021 street project. And I think they failed. They did exactly what they said they were going to do, and I believe as a council, we weren't in full understanding of what this document was going to look like. They used, they used documentation. They used a series of, of, of published studies from Bonn, Germany, London, England, and Oregon, from the early 2000s, and drew no conclusion. They did two comparable analysis, and then they interviewed three local realtors. And the only component of that CBRE document that had quantitative document was the page and a half of 55 that were the comparable analysis. They had nearly 20 pages of pictures in a 55-page document. And the documentation from the literature and the discussions that they had with realtors is at best qualitative. I find the document failed in what it was supposed to do. And when I look back at the documents that CBRE did for Independence and Howard, when I look back at the documentation from Bud, when I look at the documentation, the minutes taken from a 2014 assessment hearing, agree to it or not, the, the basis for the council since 2014 has been approximately 35%. And I will continue to argue that, that, that our actions or inactions have consequences. And I am a proponent of maintaining the status quo at 35%. And I've got scores of, of documentation here that, that I could have talked for a lot longer, but that is my position. I will not support a 26% assessment value.
So, the one problem I have with that is that our precedent, our ordinance is 35%. But our practice has been, if an appraisal shows a lower special benefit, we have lowered the assessment amount. In Bud, we went from about $14,000 per property to $10,000 per property, because that's what the appraiser said was defensible. In 2018, we dropped about eight different properties down, based on appraisals. It wasn't a blanket one. We had that choice, and we chose not to at that time. But we did reduce some of the properties based on their appraisal. So, our practice is actually to take an appraisal into consideration. And I think, just common sense-wise, if we vote for the amount that we have on the pre-assessment rule, we're saying that we, as a buyer, would pay that much more for a home. I don't think it's realistic that any buyer is gonna pay $17,000 more for a new road.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember DeLuca?
This is the third assessment hearing I've gone through on the council over the years. And I will tell everybody sitting in the audience, listening to this in this council, that this is probably the hardest decision that I personally make as a council member. And it's one I take very seriously. And I try to guide myself on the facts of the case, not necessarily the emotion of that. But I've heard words last time and tonight, like "closest to" and "about." Those, I prefer to look at things very holistically and very much by the facts. I'm guided by statute 429. And I looked it up today, John, you asked about it today. What does 429 say? So, let's take a peek at that. 429 is the statute that says, have we followed that? And 429C says, "The clerk," in this case, the city, "with the assistance of the engineer or other qualified person," in this case, Dave and his team, "as selected by this council, shall calculate the proper amount to be specifically assessed for improvements against every accessible lot, piece, or parcel of land without regard to cash valuation." Let me repeat that, "without regard to cash valuation" in accordance with provisions of 429-05. So, let's go look at what 429-05 says. Dave did exactly what he was supposed to do. Staff did exactly what they were supposed to do. Give us their professional opinion, and he did. He said, "Assess it at 35% with all the factors." 429-05 says that "the cost of any improvement may be assessed upon properties benefiting by the improvement based upon the benefits received." And I have heard more than one council member here say, "The benefits are a point-in-time calculation." What would, even what you just said, Caitlin? What would somebody pay tomorrow differently? That is not what the statute says. The statute says benefit received. The decision about what the benefit received is, is not outlined in statute. That is left to the discretion of this council to determine what the benefits are. We get the opportunity to look at a lot of data. Studies, reports, information. We've received information from CRBE. We all know about it. It's all there, very public. It was done with data that was skewed too much towards local real estate agents. It's flawed data. So, I take that into consideration. We get to look at the history. We get to look at the assessments of other projects. And what is fair between all of our residents? What is fair to all of our residents? And yes, we have assessed at a certain level and then adjusted according to some individual criteria. But to simply blanket that and say, well, we didn't, we, we took it and we dropped it from X to Y is not a fair comparison. We get to look at those reports. We get to look at that information. We get to consider the wisdom of our consultants, who fulfilled their legal responsibility under 429-061. Section D, when the engineer gave us his recommendation. He gave that to us last time. He gave it to us again this morning, this, this evening. To not take into account all pieces of that and to rely on one single data point is, to say the least, inconsistent and perhaps almost irresponsible on our part if we didn't take into account everything. The logical conclusion in my book is to stick with what we had, the 35% assessment formula, which, of course, can account for individual differences, differences that have been in the past accounted for. The only rational, responsible conclusion that I can come up with after doing all this is that we followed the recommendation of our consultant, and I will not be voting for this motion.
I, I hear that that is not in the statute, but it is established in case law. And if I were to sit here, and, and I can tell you right now, I'm, I'm not gonna speak for you, but I would bet that if this was your street and your report, that you'd be sitting in this crowd with that, with these folks. I know I would. That's why I'm vote, that's why I'm, I'm in favor of the motion.
The assessment value, John, that was assessed for the Main and Rainbow property had two members, voting members of the city council that lived on Main. One voted against it, one voted for it. So, I don't, I don't think it's a fair assessment to judge a council member would be sitting on the other side looking for a reduction in the valuation, when history shows us that there was one council member who was actually voting for, for the higher value of the two. So, there is, there is intrinsic value to this. And again, I go back to the CBRE study, and I'm, we paid $8,000 or $9,000 for a terrible document. I'll be the first to say that. Like Mike said, that went far too much on qualitative instead of quantitative. And their, their basis is, is unreasonable to me. And so, again, I won't be voting for it.
So, I am struggling with this. I as well have been on this. I was part of the council that implemented the 35%. And one of our things was big on consistencies, because some years prior, it was 50%. It was all over the board, and no one knew what to expect. So, I have been struggling with this since the discussion has started. And I would like, just to clarify, both from our engineer and our administrator, that the 35% is justifiable and defendable. Because I'm not an expert in statute and everything. I just know what I've read, and going through this now for the fourth time.
I feel that is probably a legal question. I would defer to the city attorney regarding whether it's defensible in court. I can, and Scott actually could probably lay out the processes for how assessments are defended. And again, I, the, the only kind of new information I have is that the, that those challenges that we received, those eight challenges, and Scott will tell you, are the ones that we would be seeing in court if they were, if we needed to defend them. I did add up the total of those, those eight, is roughly $33,000. So, Scott, do you mind kind of laying out how?
Before you do that, though, you are the head of staff. So, are you, are you still recommending the 35%? I mean, you put the packet together for us to review and recommended the 35. Are you still going with your recommendation?
So, just to clarify, staff has been working under the, essentially, what was the original council direction of implementing a 35%, which is consistent with what you've done in the past. We have no preference regarding your assessment policy. We want you, I mean, the, we tell you what's in, in the city code. We can tell you past practices. The 35% is up to council. The 26% is up to council. I just need to take those numbers and somehow work it into the levy, which we've already agreed what we're going to set. And I kind of put those, those impacts on the levy in the executive summary there as well, just so that you understand, from, from our standpoint, you know, the effect on, on that budget. But the end percentage is up to you guys. And again, you know, whether it's defendable is, is really a legal question.
I understand that.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, first, let me talk about the process, and then I'll talk about kind of the legal standard for any type of challenge to a, to a special assessment. And maybe that'll help guide you as you're working through this. Under a 429-061 assessment, which we're doing here, the, during, before the meeting or during the meeting, a letter, just a simple letter contesting the, the assessment has to come from property owners. My understanding is that eight of those have come forward. Anybody else who doesn't present a letter in that same manner is barred from challenging. Okay? So, the, whatever assessment is, and they can, their challenge is, is valid. So, whatever assessment is adopted, they have 30 days from the adoption to file a court action. To, and in that court action, the stand, there's really three things, three items that will be looked at from, from, by the court. One, did the property receive a special benefit from the improvement? And I'll explain what that is. The assessment is uniform upon the same class of property. I haven't really heard any concerns about the methodology, at least in this meeting. I wasn't, I don't have the benefit of the last meeting. And the assessment does not... And the assessment does not exceed this special benefit. Okay? So that's really what an appeal is about. And I've done a lot of assessment appeals. I shouldn't say a lot. I've done a number of assessment appeals before the court. And it is a summary proceeding. So there's no depositions. You basically go in front, there's, I don't believe there's any summary judgment motion, no motion paperwork. You go in front of the judge. So it's a very fairly quick process. And in there, it's those three items that would be before the court, if that's what's brought up in the petition for the court by the property owner. Now, 429-051, that statute says that the city may assess an improvement cost on any property benefit by the improvement based on benefits received. This interpretation is well settled in Minnesota. And it's basically receiving a benefit is really based, under 4051, is really based on market value. It's known as a special benefit test. Okay? And I think there's understanding, right now that's where it goes, that it's based on market value. But the test really looking at, and this is, and aside brought up, is that it's, has there been a market value, is there a market value benefit to the property? Meaning, is there an increase in market value due to the improvement being assessed in the amount that is equal to the assessment amount? So say if the assessment was five thousand dollars, you have to show a benefit at least five thousand dollars. Could be ten, but it has to be with at least that five thousand dollars in order for it to meet that challenge. Typically, evidence, you can bring any competent evidence before the court in order to prove the benefit. I should say that the assessment role as adopted is presumed valid and the burden lies on the property owner under case law to have, has the burden of proof. Okay? And in doing that, both parties would bring any competent evidence, can be a real estate expert. But more typically, it's a specific appraisal on that property showing the before and after analysis of the benefit. What would happen if you go through that process is, as I said, it cannot exceed whatever the court determines it is. I mean, they'll take all the factors. They can look at the CBRE report. They can look at the agent, you know, talked, you know, somebody else can bring in agents. Most likely, like I said, they're going to have opposing appraisals at that point. And normally what happened, say if the assessment was ten thousand dollars. I'm sorry, say the assessment was ten thousand dollars. And say it came in at seven thousand. What the court would do, there's two things. One is just to summarily modify the assessment down to the seven thousand. So you're only going to see that difference. And the other is to set aside the assessment and send it back to the city to reassess within those guidelines. That's the remedy that would be there. With regard to, one question may come up is, well, is there a recovery of costs by, for the city or for the property owner in the assessment? With regard, under the statute, under 429.081, there is no language with regard to allowing a challenging property owner to recover any fees. On the flip side, there is a possibility for recovering some fees if our assessment role is upheld. Good or bad, that is what the statute says. And there's no other case law that modifies that language. So hopefully, that helps answer the process and answer how, if there was a challenge, what we would see. And we would know, again, remember, it's a short window. It's a thirty-day statute of limitations with regards to bringing the challenge. If that challenge isn't brought in district court, then they're barred.
Scott, would you clarify again that recovery cost? The resident cannot recover costs, but the city theoretically could?
I do not see anything. 429-081 is the language with regards to recovery costs. There is no language in here with regards to a property owner recovering costs. The third of the last sentence in here states, "If a appellant does not prevail upon the appeal, costs incurred shall be taxed by the court and judgment entered therefore." Now, what those costs will be, I don't know what they allow for. Probably not attorney's fees, but most likely filing fees and maybe the appraisal fee. Maybe. It's going to be up to the court to decide.
So that's if the seller does not prevail. So if we do prevail...
Madam Mayor, members of the council, again, my presentation is to the council. But I will say that that's only if they don't prevail. If it's one dollar difference, so it comes back in appraisal, that's prevailing. So, you know, it's a risk on both sides. I have seen, I have seen an assessment appeal. It was sixteen thousand and that was the assessment. There wasn't a CBRE report ahead of time. So we looked at opposing appraisals. We came up at about seventeen thousand. They came at ten. I just think that, the judge, I feel ruled incorrectly, you know, on that one. But all it was, was a six thousand dollar difference and with a half-day hearing. And so I think the issue there is that, you know, I don't know what their fees were, but I can't imagine it would, you know. The issue is they couldn't recover those costs.
Scott, can you clarify when you said that the judge could make it come back to the council for reassessment? Is that just for those who have sent the letters or for the whole project?
No, that's just for that one specific property.
Okay.
Yeah. Because remember, so you say if you have a hundred properties, I actually don't know how many properties there are because, again, I wasn't here on the last one. But say there's fifty properties, okay? You're down to eight. So those are eight valid, you know, challenges at this point. And then it's a matter of, it could be down to two, do an assess, or one, or all of them, do an assessment appeal. Those are the only ones that you're dealing with, those individual properties. That's why at that point, then you're doing individual appraisals for each, for those properties, if it comes up.
Any further discussion, questions, points of clarification that need to be made?
I just want to say a couple more things. I think the statute tells us what we can or cannot do. It does not tell us what we should do. It tells me as a legal adult, I can smoke. It does not mean that I should smoke. I don't think just because we can assess seventeen thousand dollars means we should. I think we have to look outside of the numbers and consider the people who we are affected with, both now and on future projects and on past projects where we have made changes. And so I would encourage us to take into account that the person who benefits the most from this project is the city because it reduces our future cost for maintenance. Look at the number of water main breaks we've had to deal with. We pay for those, the resident stuff. It helps our system overall. It helps attract residents and businesses to our cities to have well-maintained roads, to have good water, to have good sewer. And so truly, I think the special benefit is lower than we think it is. And so that is why I proposed a lower amount than what's in policy. And I would suggest that at a future meeting, as I've suggested in the past, that we reconsider our thirty-five percent policy.
Well, and while I hear what you're saying, at this point, I feel like those are two different things.
I know. We're not talking about that tonight.
As one who was part of that group that made the thirty-five, I have six neighborhoods that I need to justify that to if we were to change that now. So that's where I'm struggling. Any further discussion? All right. It is a resolution, so it is a roll call vote.
Excuse me. Sorry. DeLong?
I...
What are we voting to?
Oh, sorry.
The motion that Councilmember Cahill made and DeLong seconded for twenty-six percent.
Cahill?
Hi.
Moskuski?
Nay.
DeLuca?
Nay.
Say.
The motion does not pass. It is three to two.
So you guys are using data that you felt has been outdated for how long? And now you're coming back with your own data that you're saying is not any good?
You hired somebody to do the data, and it's wrong?
Three times, it's the same people.
Who's suffering for it? You guys are the ones that messed up.
And then you also leveled it off at everybody the same price. Some of us had little tiny little lot sizes. And now we're going to get hit with this assessment at the full boat price of whatever it is.
Everybody was assessed the same, no matter how much property you pack. We have a small lot. We have neighbors with large lots. We are paying for part of their property that they chose to buy.
Plus we're going to continue paying that now in the future, so...
Assess us as our property goes, not just blanking everybody all at once. The same price.
As to what you get charged, huh?
The CBR report was great last time. This thing, it's no good because it didn't come out in your favor. Did you voice the same thing last time?
And is there, are you guys making money on this deal? Or is it one hundred percent that is being assessed?
Does anybody talk? Answer questions.
Are we paying for the park up there?
Yeah, they're paying to take the park up here, by the way.
You created the mess.
I would move that we follow the attorney, the engineer and staff's suggestion, assess these properties at the thirty-five percent column with the recognition that the city is still paying for sixty-five percent of the cost of this project.
All right. There's a motion on the table by Councilmember DeLuca for assessing at the thirty-five with the city still paying sixty-five.
I will second that.
Someone just answer why we were assessed the same across the board for everybody's house rather than assessing it as previously been done?
There's a motion and a second...
I'd like to hear Mr. Martini's response.
On the table? And it is a resolution vote.
Well, we need discussion.
Sorry. I'm sorry.
It's okay because the motion is to go with the recommendation of staff. But staff has made it very clear that it is not their recommendation. It is the calculations based on an ordinance that was created by previous council members. It is not an engineering's recommendation. In the last presentation he gave us, he even gave us the average of the CBRE report. So you could say, "Well, he said this amount, so it's a recommendation." He's simply giving us the calculations. So I go back to, it is not a recommendation on engineering.
Well, and I'm going after the executive summary, which says recommended action.
Consistency, how was the cul-de-sac at the end of Howard Avenue assessed? If it was assessed? You talk about consistency. They got Kirk Geyer, new pavement, storm.
Okay. I'm going to call recess. All right. The meeting is back. Thank you for that. I need a clarification on Robert's rule of order. So this is not a public hearing. That's why there is no interaction right now. And I'm going to turn it over to Attorney Landsman for a few minutes for point of clarification.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my understanding is that at the last meeting, there was a public hearing. It was closed by motion. City council meetings are a limited public forum. The only right to speak is that if there is an open public meeting. But again, that's limited, too, with regards to any special rules that the council may set up, unless the city, the city does have the ability, counsel by a majority of vote, to reopen the public hearing, if that's what it desires to do. There is no requirement under statute or under Robert's rules of order that the meeting, that the public hearing has to be opened, reopened. But with regard to, you know, conversations with regards to anything else right now, what matters is what the council is talking about so they can have their discussion. So your options are, there is no requirement, but you can reopen it.
I would also add, Mayor, the staff is happy to re-go over any points earlier that we've talked about. Obviously, we've given you a lot of information over a long period of time. We've given the public a lot of information over a long period of time. So when it comes to process or, you know, how things are developed, we're happy to go over any of that for, if that is the council's will.
All right. Thank you very much. And just to go back, we had a motion made, but it was not seconded, correct?
I seconded.
Did you second it? Yes, and then you spoke. Okay. All right. Thank you. Any further discussion?
I just want to point out that we, you know, we're talking about consistency. Consistency, and a point was just brought up that we, you know, you want to be consistent with the thirty-five percent. And that was something that you were part of that group. But we haven't been consistent on the way that we actually have assessed the properties either. So I understand you're thirty-five percent. You were part of the one that made that decision. But, you know, I think it's extremely unfair that just because we have thirty-five percent that's happened in previous councils, I don't see why we can't change that now. You know, and I've heard before statements saying, "Well, it's really easy to spend other people's money." Or people can get really, really, you know, used to spending somebody's money or comfortable with spending their money. I'm not comfortable assessing, you know, a thirty-five percent just because somebody else said at one time that that's what our policy should be.
Well, and Councilmember DeLong, just to clarify, I'm not comfortable spending anyone's money, but it's how the city works. Because we are too small. We can't pay for our roads and our taxes. So this at some point will happen to every single one of us, even on Three Oaks Avenue, right in front of me. So this is not ideal for anyone.
And I think it's fair to also say, John, that it's not one single point. It's the determination this council, by a majority vote, will ultimately make as to what is the benefit that the residents are receiving for this road project. That's a decision point governed by a number of data points, not just one.
I just don't see how, I don't see how anybody can sit here and say that thirty-five percent is the value increase of a property. There's no way that I can sell my house for thirty-five percent more after a reconstruction project. I'm just, I'm...
John, it's not thirty-five percent, house value thirty-five percent more. It's thirty-five percent of the total reconstruction cost, which may only be four and a half or four and a half percent of the value of a house. The average value of the houses in this thirty-nine-piece project is just under three hundred thousand dollars. Two hundred ninety-nine and some change. Average price. So if you want to talk averages, it works out to be like less than six percent. And CBRE, I still don't know how they did it, but came up with four percent.
And I think you have to go back to 429, Section C. The calculation of the specially assessed improvements against every accessible lot without regard to cash value. So you're determining what the benefit is to that property. So you're determining what the benefit is to that property. The benefit to that property. And that's a judgment call.
So to that point, how does 35% of what we paid a contractor, how does that in any way correlate to the benefit that the properties are receiving? It's based on the supplies that they use to pave the road, the pipes, the labor? It's not actually tied to the benefit the houses are receiving. That's my problem with that 35%. It's, it's not tied to the actual benefit that properties are receiving.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Members of the council, I just want to clarify what the benefit is. It's not, you look at the project as a whole, not what's in front of your property. For instance, some properties, and I don't know on this project, but in the other projects I've been involved with, some projects will get a sidewalk, other ones won't. That's not the test. The test is looking at the project as a whole and the, with regard to the area, and what is the increase in market value based on the project? That's what it's, that's, that's what it's looking at. So it doesn't matter, so you can't start cherry, it's not a matter of cherry picking, well, I got, they got this and I didn't get this. It's looking at the, the whole thing. So if I did, if I got into, if it got into a point where we were in court, that's the argument would be, the argument before, on both sides would be, what is the increase in market value based on the improvements, meaning the project for the, for the area? And hopefully, that clarifies what the, what the standard is.
Thank you.
Well, in that case, I think the special benefit's even lower. If you're not talking about personal benefit, I don't think that corner of Maple Plain is suddenly worth these $100,000 more, so.
Any further discussion? There's a motion and a second for the 35% assessment, and it is a resolution.
Councilmember Fay?
Aye.
DeLuca?
Aye.
Moskuski?
Aye.
Cahill?
No.
DeLong?
No.
All right. The ayes have it, three to two. Next item of business is new business. We do not have any before us to, before us tonight. So next item will be council reports and other business, and we'll start with Councilmember DeLong.
Nothing new, other than our meetings.
Okay. Councilmember Cahill?
I attended a watershed this week. As a side note for staff, Bowser does have new grants for pollinator gardens, and so it's called a neighborhood of demonstration. So for our Veterans Memorial Park, we could potentially have it paid for.
Nice.
Going to help me write that?
Sure.
And that is my report.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Fay?
Well, I continue to attend Orinor Rotary, and obviously, as you saw tonight in the presentation, our service projects tend to pay in spades. I attended both a fire relief as well as a fire commission meeting, and did one final recap in a budget committee meeting with Councilmember DeLuca.
Thank you. Councilmember DeLuca?
Really busy month. Highway 12 Coalition Meeting. We are reviewing and keeping connected with our public service agencies, the police and fire departments and the law enforcement, discussing how we're going to improve Highway 12's corridor, all the way from essentially Delano Inn now, is all part of what the overall project is. We had a personnel meeting earlier in the month, studying year-end processes, including performance reviews. Looking forward to early next year and revising our biannual policies that we have. We're on a two-year cycle, so we'll be looking at doing those very spread out over the early spring type. Finance meeting, continued to refine our financial reporting, and a big kudos to staff for the excellent work on the financial stuff. We saw some of that earlier today at the workshop.
Thank you.
I think we're really getting a good handle on our financial stuff, so thank you, Clarissa.
You're welcome.
EDA, continuing discussions on downtown and the potential involvement of the city in that effort. You know, that's the million-dollar question, will the city be down in that building? If the building's going to happen, are we going to be a part of that? Can we be the catalyst that'll make that work? That's some exciting things and sort of one of the strategic initiatives we've had, so very nice to see that moving forward. And then several workshops on a variety of things, everything from assessments to finance to projects around town. And I had a wonderful coffee with the council earlier in, in the month.
Cookies.
Cookies with the council. Council, cookies with the council. Thank you, John. We met here at City Hall. I would have preferred to be out in a park, but in mid-November, it was a tad bit cold. So Clarissa and I spent a couple hours with three of our residents, had some really good discussions. I think you saw someone in her report ask what, what we did. I do think we should continue those conversations, and I would hope that in a future workshop, we can talk about scheduling this. I think I was at the end of the five cycle with all of us, and we've all had a chance to do that in some form or fashion, or at least have one, right, John?
John, DeLuca, and I both had one.
Yeah.
I think Flan would have been better, my favorite draw.
But I do think we should repeat those. I believe there's a cycle and a value in having some, some civic engagement. How do we even support that more through our communications effort? I thought it was a very healthy discussion with our three residents that we had.
Great. Awesome. Thank you, everyone, and thank you to council for picking up some meetings for me the past month, as I've had a lot going on personally that hasn't been able to be flexible with the schedule. I was able to attend the Regional Council of Mayors and the Northwest Hennepin League, and also the Delano Senior Center Advisory Board. And just want to remind Maple Plain residents that there is a bus that comes here and picks you up for $2. So if you are interested in transportation, especially as the roads will be getting icy, please don't hesitate to reach out. We have a great group from Maple Plain that are regulars at the senior center, and they would warmly welcome you. I was able to attend the Minnesota Women in City Government virtually, and we had a great speaker on women's voting and the history of that, and that was very educational and well-attended. Just want to remind people that our annual USANA event, sponsored by West Hennepin Public Safety and the Police Reserves, is coming up on December 4th, so we look forward to seeing everyone outside for that. With that, are there any other reports or other business that needs to take place this evening? Staff? Okay.
I move to adjourn.
All right. Motion by Cahill to adjourn.
I'll second.
Second by DeLong. All in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Opposing, sign? Motion carries. The meeting's adjourned at 8:30.